Okay, call to order, roll call.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Chairman Lander.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Tyler. Councilmember Levitt.
Here.
Commissioner Will Hoyt. Mr. Chairman, you do have a form seven members present to our exit.
All right, approval of the agenda.
Make one correction on item H, that is supposed to be R four and not C two, as far as the reason. This is in new business or legislative decisions, new business, item H.
Say that again, Tom.
It's under new business under legislative decisions, item H, which is the rezoning for state route 437. That is supposed to be R four and not C two. It's stated correctly in the annexation bar and on the slides as well.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, approval of the meeting minutes from October 23rd to 25th. Satisfied, most?
This is the first time we're seeing those, did I miss that? New emails just here.
They were, yeah, they were just like on the table.
I'd very stern, I just had to improve it, bring it all back, so I'll make a motion to approve it, man.
If you found something in a light review, come back and book change.
Ladies, second.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any constituent comments?
I don't have anybody signed up. I'd like to make comments about anything on tonight's agenda.
All right, moving into the planning commission.
I'm sorry.
I had a question about the agenda, I noticed there was spoken on, from my head letter on rezoning of West or Jackson Street. I don't see it anywhere.
That is actually not going to be on until January because, oh, are you with Drew Clark? Are you, oh, are you from?
No, actually, I'm the neighbor right across the street and I found out through the grapevine about the rezoning of West.
Yeah, I noticed that in his letter, he put the incorrect date on that because, oh, what he didn't know at the time that the letter went out is that the, the application to combine all of them had to come first. He couldn't do the rezoning because they were not parcels and he was trying to do it with one application. So it's got to go through, that is going to be on the planning commission, the combination part is on next month and then in January it'll go to rezoned.
Okay. Okay. Hey, site plan, multi-family town home apartments, Daniel Smith Road, tax map 78, parcel 41.14. Uh, New Doors Development Group LLC owner Wamboldt Associates representatives are requesting approval of the 66 two-story town home apartment units on approximately 6.04 acres, currently zone R four high-density residential, located in Amos C. Smith Testemunary, Testamentaries of Family Trust subdivision, town home units are two stories with dwelling density of 10.93 acres and classified as a future land use map as mixed-density residential character area.
Okay. If you recall from, this is, this was deferred at the last month's meeting, if you recall, this is 63 townhomes in the R four zone district. And there were a number of comments that were remaining from staff, including John Freeman, as well as, um, I had some. It's since then, uh, there was a recent middle that was made November 18th that answered, um, I would say substantially answered most of mine. There, there's a minor one that I called, uh, but it's not really, uh, uh, you know, it's not something that's, it's, it's just more paper, um, documentation that needs to be changed. John Freeman did say that there were three items that needed to be addressed, well, shovel power, but, um, those can be handled during, um, the, the construction or development phase. And then planning commission had a number of requests as well, including TDEX letter, approval letter, which we received, um, as well as a comment from Will Owen, um, on whether or not with the capacity of it, if, if something were to happen in that injection well were plugged, um, and then, um, the green space or the open space calculation, which I noticed was not included in the recent middle. So we've got the majority of, with the exception of the, the open space calculation. And Sarah is here and, and I did alert her that that was not in there and that maybe she could explain it a little bit more of how that calculation was made because if you look at the, helps if I turn.
We're going to need your video new clicker.
Yeah, I wanted to, let me just go to that, um, section here. So this is, uh, is this the updated section? I think this is the, I think, uh, these slide, yes, um, with the new, uh, the calculations were, were the same. They were, they were just written in a different way, uh, but percentage wise, they were the same as last month's presentation. So Sarah, if you don't mind explaining that part of it and how you calculated it because.
So I'm sorry, I do have a visual, I believe it was you that asked last, last. But I was a little confused as to whether or not we want to include this in the plan set or if it was meant to be provided as like, just this meeting.
So did this get in their packet?
No.
This is brand new one, okay, so.
Yeah.
Let me take my new math on the calculations.
This is, this is not new math or anything on there, this is still.
That is the same.
This is just clarifying how you came to that conclusion. Okay, so it's just, it's, this, the calculation up here matches that one and this just shows how it's actually, uh, calculated.
So it's the same calculation.
I just showed the hatch.
Are showing it more detail.
I, yes, what we're counting as green space and active open spaces. And the, the green, um, dash line is what we're considering active. And I did, I believe Ms. Gonzalez suggested last time that we have something a little bit more than just the trail, so I did add a dog park. Um, but we are going to, we are counting that as well, but just the one park on the north side would be sufficient, 15%.
Um, if I get it finished with that, can we get a copy?
Yeah.
Ready to get that copy?
Oh, yes, yes.
That's a very part of the record and stuff.
Okay, so did you want me to have, if I have Facebook, Facebook, Facebook to an electric?
Anything that's grass, this.
Okay. I did find, um, the review sent me regarding what is counted as open space and it didn't say setbacks. Actually, make sure I'm working off the way.
We have a newer zoning, that's not online.
That's what I was.
Uh, yeah, I've already sent the, the, oh, this is probably from, oh, and let me just clear that part of it up. So the PUD describes the use of setbacks. Now typically, uh, depending on, you, you typically don't use a, um, a, a front setback. Depending on the spacing in between, you don't typically use the, the side yard setbacks unless it's over a certain amount of feet, like if it's, uh, if you have less, uh, uh, spacing in between, I, I can't remember what you're spacing between buildings.
And I've also heard of some jurisdictions want like a minimum square footage, so landscape islands don't count. We did count them, I, I didn't see any language.
There, there's no language about landscape island.
That's great. Yeah, we do have the setback line, which is in, we had definitions even in the R three A and R four about, that was part of it. Back to your council pack, we did, it's probably not in what you got unless.
Okay, yeah, I, I did try, but I figured it might.
Yeah, we need to get that online and this is not so much her issue in this project, but in general, this is not what we had in mind for green space. I mean, this is what we thought last month, which is, I mean, every piece of grass, they're counted as greens as open space. That's not the concept. We need to do a better job with our definition, I guess.
Yeah, and, and we are, uh, planning for, uh, code divisions in the beginning part of this, uh, next, uh, January, beginning that stage. So we can always add that clarification in there, uh, because we do define it in PUDs, um, or we do a better job in the PUD defining that, so.
But clarified, that's not going to affect you.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, that's an internal.
This is just in part of what we're just talking in the future.
Well, I was going to say, as far as like clarification goes, I know some places request essentially that as pervious. And as long as I can get a little bit more on what the difference is between pervious and impervious.
Yeah, because you get.
No, not pervious and impervious, but, um, if it's considered green space or just pervious. Because like you said, the setbacks don't count.
So it would be the difference between all greenery and active green space. So the active green space is, is what people can actually use.
Yeah.
Everything that's there, like obviously, you know, we're not counting setbacks, so it's there, it's green space, but you need to have that buffer.
It's almost like, one side of this one, it's, it's limited, I think the south, is that the, the south, the southern portion? So, you know, if it's allocated on one side, but that's not much, uh, I'd like to see it more spaced out, I believe, but I mean, like the chairman said, that doesn't affect.
I see, yeah, sorry, I will, I will.
I can scan it into you, but it's not staff.
Yeah.
I shifted.
Are you guys done with it?
Yeah, we're done.
It's y'all, so I'll have to speak.
On completely different issue, I just wanted to go back and verify. Tom, the, the documents that you're showing online say 63, you said 63, but the agenda says 66. How many units are there?
It, it was reduced to 63. Yeah, the agenda, when it came out, it was 66 and then it was reduced again by Tom got to the meeting at 63.
Thank you, just want to make sure.
I made my bad correction, 63.
And, oh, and if you recall too, there's a moratorium in this area, so, uh, in the new set of the November 18th recent middle, it's clarified that building permits won't be issued for those ones that are out there. And there's provisions in their development plan, uh, to, to stop the, the, some of the roadway short of, of the other item, other buildings that are in, um, the moratorium.
And we did extend the mulch trail as kind of a temporary loop since the buildings for phase two and the road and sidewalks won't extend, it'll still be a usable seamless space for the tenants who move in with first phase. So we did put care into making sure there's mailboxes and everything, so everybody should be.
Yeah, that, that was one of the comments that, that was brought up and it was addressed. And then, um, as far as the injection well, we saw that the TDEX had approved it, but Will also said that he evaluated the, um, drainage calculations again. And if the injection well is fully plugged, it won't allow any more water to be injected into the subsurface, then the post-developed peak storm discharge from the site won't exceed what the pre-developed, um, peak discharge, meaning that, um, it still will function as intended.
Okay, any other questions?
Unfortunately, the support of our city will, will under that moratorium on the sewer.
Yes, sir.
So everything will be on.
It's impacting that area just.
procedural notification?
Um, uh, there is no, uh, there is none for, um, they, they've addressed all the comments that were from the previous one. Uh, so there was none in that part, there's some post-procedural ones or post-approved ones that are related more towards as they get into construction.
Going through some shovel power.
Yes, yes.
Where's the, where's the mailbox?
There's one there and there's one second.
Oh, okay, so that's what had, and then part of your.
And we did make sure that there, even though you guys required four total, we didn't do four here, four there. So it would affect.
So the four here, does it compromise what?
No, so these, all of these are.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This one.
Okay, I'll reiterate the motion, then. Take, take, take.
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, turn it down due to several of the issues with the, with the plan and it's kind of the way that we're wanting to go. I just don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with this on that, on that side here.
Just please be chock that point.
Yeah, you're.
We need to be specific on the reasons.
Because the, this is a underlying zoning as R four and it's permitted.
Well, it's, it's the, the, the plan, I, I just don't, I just, I wish, I like a different plan, I just don't like the, the size of the, of the subdivision.
Uh, their, their meeting are.
I know they are.
Standards.
But I don't, I just don't think that that's what this position wants. Um, the, the rules aren't there, but, uh, y'all, y'all are against it, but I, that's my motion.
Our green space unfortunately is not defined to the level that it should be, I guess. But, I mean, you're calculating somebody's space in front of their window as green space and if somebody who doesn't like kids lives there and they've got kids playing in front of that window, that's, they're going to consider that their space, not open space. So I, I see the.
But I want to reiterate that that's not the fault of the applicant.
I, I agree, it's our.
So I just don't want it to be.
Right, so. If I sit on the floor, I'm going to need a second.
Yes, all right, now, I want you to be serious, so. Play it like you want, that's how, so you don't worry, I don't like the, the plan, I don't like their plan, I don't think that it's, um, the density, just the, the way, I just don't like the plan.
Specifically also to green space?
Yes, specifically to green space.
It doesn't appear at face value that the green space, although definitively is following the general terms of what we have, it's not, it doesn't though, because we have a minimum green space requirement of them to have the active green space and what, I think what Bo's trying to say is that they're considering every piece of green grass and active green spaces. But it is our fault for not having that clearly defined, so.
May I suggest it would be beneficial for us to read what we have?
Yes, please, that would be beneficial.
Can you get the ordinance and read what we have?
Green space.
Just as a reminder.
Well, yes, yes, I'm going to be, he's going to grab the.
Sorry, that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if we do that and then we do need a second to have further discussion.
Okay. A little later, you'll look on doing a, a jump back or.
I think we should wait. So, it's okay.
So this is your motion.
I don't say. Dance, no, I can't.
You may be seated, you can, you won't get back up, whatever you like, the, I'll be looking for that.
She got a long drive back and bring.
We appreciate you being here.
Last week or last month was my first one, these by myself.
Change anything other than having the dog park. But you just did the clarification of the coloring to show us exactly what the calculation came from. I think, and right here, the. I think, and right here, this is very, like, you're setting up your minimum to the setback, it's not a buffer, so. Yes, I fully understand this. And there's many jurisdictions that don't want design standards and they're against it and all that, but this right here is the reason why we absolutely have to have it, and not talk about it. But it has to be clarified, and that's where we're trying to. Right, so the green space needs to be separate than the pervious area. So basically, this setback isn't just for buffering for the neighbor, it's also buffering to make sure that the, the development can drain here and ruin civils, you know? Right, we have to contain the water that hits this ground. We have to contain it within the property boundaries. You can't let it roll off and drain into the neighboring properties. So the whole point of the twenty-five foot setback is to make sure that water that hits this ground, that would used to be perbed into where you now have buildings, it can't be perbed there anymore. So we have to make sure that that water that would, that runs off these roofs can now be taken care of in this small twenty-five foot space. And that's why there's a difference between the twenty-five foot setback and a green space. And so the green space is, right, what you can actively use without having to worry about the lot of flushing the kids and swimming. Right, 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 so even back here, it's just like, that's, the setback is multi-purpose. It's not just a, being twenty-five foot from your neighbor and having that, you know, setback for fire, because it's also a fire setback, you know, there's multiple reasons why you have a twenty, a setback from property line. But, you know, one of them is fire, making sure that this wall isn't too close to the wall. And I think that's probably, but the other is to make sure when you build more roofs, and the more roofs you build, the less area you have for natural water drainage. And so if you have what normally is natural water drainage now being taken up by buildings, where does that water go? Well, you can't let it roll onto the neighboring property. It has to be taken care of on this property. No detention pines, no area for, there's, there's no accountability for drainage here. Like, where does that water go? You're assuming that this twenty-five foot natural drainage.
Yeah.
Well, you do.
But how do you get water from here to here? You know? Yeah, I, 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 right, right, there's like.
No, it's.
But there's still, like, even though you account for some of it, there's still gonna be a natural pool.
Hey, can I see that map?
Yeah, well, it's right, well, I figure.
And the, the definition that I was working off of, that is thirty percent, was any R4 zone development having land use types of multifamily encompasses townhomes, condominiums, and apartments of duplex building type shall provide a minimum of thirty percent of the gross project areas open space, and at least fifty percent of this land set aside as usable or active open space. As defined in Article Two, Section Two Point Two of this ordinance. Usual, usable open space shall be located within a quarter of a mile from any dwelling unit or approximately one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. Open space within an R4 zoning district is regulated by open space requirements. Article Section Two, and then gross project area as used herein shall mean the outer limits of the lot or parcel to be altered or affected by the post-development.
I'd say the Article Two.
I, and that, that's just me saying.
Yeah, maybe you could be in your article.
But the Article Two is like.
Gross project area, thirty percent of the gross project area, which is. Which it has something to do with, I mean.
Do we have this, uh, Article, seven, section, you said, two, our definition of usable green space? What is that?
Yeah, that's, that's right, usable. Oh, usable.
Where, where it refers to the subregs of.
It's a, it's the same, it's the same.
Is it the same language?
Yes. Uh, green space in recreation talks about recreational activity or active assets. It doesn't, it doesn't, I think what everybody is, tends to, uh, is not understanding is the calculation part of it is not clarified. It's not the thirty percent or whatever, it's how we get to that here. And that's what's missing in our, that's the weakness within our ordinance.
Yeah.
Was there enough?
No, I, I didn't, I got it, I had to share and I didn't get one, but that's okay, we'll, we'll figure it out.
So, Mr. Chairman, I could just say, what Tom has handed out is a copy of the shovel municipal zoning ordinance that was updated and effective as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. He's handed out section five point four point three, high-density residential districts, R4, that's pages ten and eleven that he handed out. And, uh, also then he handed out definitions, that is in Article Two, starting on page twenty-seven, and that includes the open space definition as well as open space usable definition. That is what has been handed.
So the question is, what, what you were working on, is it the same, is, is this the verbiage?
Yes, it's the.
Yes, that is exactly, because I sent it to them when, when, oh, they've been working on this project for some time, and when the code changed, I made them aware of it and sent that to them.
So this, Tom, this, the section five, four, three, C, open space requirements, this was what was updated also as of April fifth, uh, excuse me, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Includes gross project area for this, so that was what you were using?
Yes, the thirty percent of the gross project area.
Asking questions.
Excuse me, I was wondering what your.
We have a name in. Two, it's pronounced like the number, T, T E W.
T E W, thirty percent of within the setback, isn't gross project area the area within the setbacks not including setbacks? When you define gross project area, the gross project area can only be within the twenty-five, thirty-five, ten-foot setbacks.
It says.
Not, 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 not how that's defined, would that imprint that out? Imprint out.
So that's what I'm trying to clarify, like, do we clarify as gross project area within the setback boundaries? Or is gross project area the whole parcel?
So the specific wording is gross project area as used herein shall mean the outer limits of the lot or parcel to be altered or affected by a proposed development.
Right, so the outer limits to be.
Parcel them up setbacks. I mean.
Which is the block.
That is the lot lines, but in this.
Okay. This is second to Bo's motion.
So.
Um, there's.
The law to parcel to be altered.
Mr. Gonzalez, can you just hold up just a minute? We have a second, we have a motion on the floor to deny, would you not have a second to have any further conversation?
I've, 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 uh, there seems to be more discussions, since I've made that, and I like to withdraw my motion, and continue with the discussion.
Okay.
Can I make a point on, on what you brought out, Tom? I'm looking at what we passed as the city council, this is from our council packet of April. There is a sentence missing on your Article Two paperwork here. Between the number five and open space usable, there was a sentence in the actual, and I've got our packet from that month, that said, "Open spaces shall not include mail kiosks, roads, parking lots, stormwater facilities, or required buffer yards."
That is true, that's, oh, that is actually al- already in the subregs.
So did that not include our setbacks?
It was in the section, yeah, it was, I'm looking, yeah, I'm actually.
Oh, it was in our section.
It was in what we approved, yeah, for this, for this Article Two, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I was getting the, the language that she's referring to. Yeah, the buffer yards, yeah, when she's referring to a setback. Yeah, that's the language.
So the setbacks, you're, we're assuming the buffers are also including setbacks. But what I have a problem with is where it says here, outer limits of the lot or parcel to be altered or affected by the proposed development. Your setbacks cannot be altered or affected. So when you read this, the way I interpret it, and I could be wrong, I could be completely wrong, but when I read this, when it says gross project area as used herein shall mean the outer limits of the lot or parcel to be altered, not the outer limits of the lot.
Are you, are you, let me just clarify here. You're saying that instead of the whole parcel to be altered, it's a portion of the parcel that is allowed to be altered?
In my interpretation, that's what this states. So, and that's how I've always read a parcel to, to, to mean. So when you read it as a whole, there's no commas, there's no breaks, there's no nothing. And in legalese, ors and commas mean a lot. Um, so when you read this and it says gross project area as used herein shall mean the outer limits of the lot or parcel to be altered. The outer limits that can only be altered are the outer limits within the setbacks. You cannot alter anything within the boundaries of the setback. So the lot or parcel can only be altered within the setback boundaries. So the, the parcel itself is the outer limits, but the outer limits that can be altered are the outer limits that are within the setbacks, and that's how I read this. Now, I mean, that's, I'm not a lawyer and I don't, but I am a designer, and when I design, that's what we interpret, outer limits to be altered, outer limits to be altered. Anything, nothing within the twenty-five foot setback can be altered. So therefore, that cannot be included in your outer limits of the parcel that can be altered. So you have an outer limit of the parcel, which is the whole parcel boundaries, and then you have an outer limit of what can be altered.
Okay, Tom, what are you? Well, then, that doesn't explain when you alter or putting in stormwater features, when you put in drainage utility, um, features. It, it doesn't, the way that it was inten- intended, uh, was to mean to the property line, not necessarily, um, to the setback line. Because, uh, depending on, uh, because typically the whole site is altered. There's no, unless you're preserving, uh, stream buffers, uh, mature tree areas, you're not gonna alter those. Um, that, that was just how it was intended at the time.
I'm just drawing here, this just represents what's under root, correct?
Orange, orange instead.
So, the people really have a patio.
I mean, you're.
Um, so the design, it, they're forty-five feet long, but I believe the units that you're showing me were thirty feet, so there's.
Yes, and that's in the gross project area, it's different than the.
Some of the units have a.
In my opinion, that's what I thought. That's how I've always interpreted it.
Okay, oh, I do have a question, in this calculation of thirty percent. I guess getting back to Josh's comment, did that include the mail kiosk and all the stuff, does that count?
It didn't include the pond, uh, it didn't include anything that is building asphalt, concrete.
No.
Did it include any stormwater?
But it is, anything that is grass.
Okay, is there any, is there any stormwater included or any buffer yard in the calculation?
No, the storm pond is not included in the green space.
Okay, what about buffer yard, what do we define in buffer yard? Is this buffer yard not setback, I don't know, honestly?
We do have a little bit of wiggle room if we wanted to, if it was a front setback, we need it come to our line.
Yeah.
But not the side setback, so it depends on how you, if we, are we defining the property setbacks, the front yard, side yard, and backyard, those setbacks? Are we defining those as the buffer areas, the buffer yard, or are those just setbacks? So if we're in.
Yeah, there's a.
There's a definite, that's the definitive problem.
It, it certainly doesn't sound like that's the way it is in the subreg, it is in the subregs, there's a buffer yard, but I don't know if it's actually defined what that buffer yard.
Is supposed to entail.
Yeah, what it's supposed to mean, I, so.
It may have one?
Uh, no, I believe it has one, but I just don't, I, I, I could pull out the subregs to, to see if it's actually in there. It might just be used in the, the book, but not necessarily.
As an architect, all I can say is that we have never been able to use the setbacks as part of our design area. Like, when you're talking about gross project and design area, you're not supposed to use any of the front side or back setbacks as part of your project design area. Everything has to be contained within the boundaries of what's inside the setbacks. Anything else, you're not. You know, we had to get the whole story up there, it's, well, it's clarification on our end, more than anything.
Also, here, I just want to.
A learning lesson, we're all growing.
I'm gonna.
We stand in without, we're growing. Still much easier than standing in front of Franklin. I'm just gonna tell you, I've been in front of Franklin, they won't stop us, Franklin, and we're so easy here.
I mean, you guys definitely care, and I can tell that you guys put a lot of thought into your decisions.
The site plan, some of you, uh, that you're showing here, two hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet, a little over. And then you go back down, where thirty percent of that would be almost seventy-nine thousand square feet. But you actually calculated, if you got a hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet of, uh, open space, which is about forty-seven point two percent, is that correct?
So you might have some legal rent to really be in.
Well, I actually did, I, so that hatch is to the property line, I did just kind of see if it would work, run a hatch with, to the setback line, and I think it was like twenty-eight percent. So like, we're, we're close, yeah.
So, so what's coming around, actually, there is no definition in subregs, it is in the PUD section of buffer yard.
What does it say, Todd?
Uh, so under the definitions in a PUD, a buffer yard is a transitional space which consists of horizontal space, land, and vertical elements, plants, berms, fences, or walls for the purpose of physically separating and visually screening adjacent land uses that are not fully compatible. So, yeah, so what it has to do with, um, buffering and, or, you know, screening between uses and.
Okay. Uh-oh, good comments.
Yeah, I believe that's.
I'm gonna make mine now. Oh, I think, and I understand everybody's concern.
Oh, I think, and I understand everybody's concern, and I'm with you on a lot of them. But that's not this young lady's fault. Uh, we want to get things better, we need to make things better. But at hand is, does her plan compatible with our sub regs? I think they do. And so I think we need to be positive after and be having a discussion, but we need to go on. We spent enough time on this, but we got a lot more to go over, so that's not too senseless.
I'm in commotion, you're first.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Blinn?
Yes.
He goes first.
All right.
If you, Tom, if you get this, this is on.
I'll, I'll do this kind of.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to view business. Resorts 503 River View Drive, tax map 891. I thought Tom was saying something.
Sorry.
Uh, tax map 891, group A, partial three. Um, Burlhangen Farm LLC owners, North Cut Surban Incorporated, representing collectively, requesting a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to the city council consideration of adoption to rezone point 96 acres from residential R1 to low density residential R3, medium density residential currently developed as a single family and manufactured home. The single family resident, residential is to remain and partial subdivided for the addition of a duplex. In the future land use map, the partial is classified as a 231 South Cannon Boulevard corridor character area.
Okay, um, so this is on River View Drive, which backs up against the park and all. Trying to blind anybody here. Um, so it's just what the, um, South Cannon here.
Every rest part is.
Yep. Um, the applicant is asking to, uh, rezone to R3. So let me just go to the, uh, what you're seeing here is the overhead of the view of it. And currently there is a historic house here, and then the trailer is right next to it on the same property, making it a non-conformity, uh, by having two residents on the property and also a symbolized, um, manufactured home on the property. The, this subdivision, uh, which is the River View subdivision dates back to 1929. So it's a, it's an older subdivision. Um, when I was doing the analysis, um, uh, I, I noted that, uh, the way that the language, actually I have it up here, the way that the language of primary future uses is to have mixed type of residential, um, but it's up to Lewis Avenue, Lewis Avenue is to the south, and this is about one block north of that. So I just said there was a partial inconsistency, um, in that, uh, it's not exactly meeting the, um, the future land use map, uh, in the description of, um, uh, where the mixed areas. But this whole, um, subdivision, which is, uh, R1, there are, uh, it is predominantly single family, but there are some illegal duplexes. I call them illegal, maybe I'll call them non-conforming because I don't know, maybe they were approved in the past. Um, but there are known, um, duplexes in the neighborhood. So that to me suggests that there's, uh, there might be changing, even though it could be illegal, uh, but, uh, but there, there are non-conforming. And so what the applicant is requesting is to, um, be able to remove the, the property size is enough to, uh, if it was rezoned to R3, um, to, uh, do one duplex where the trailer is, and trailer would be removed, and then this, the single family house would remain. And that is the gist of it.
Sure.
Oh, there's a better shot.
What was recommendation?
Uh, the, on rezoning, I just give you the facts.
Oh, sorry.
Um, there's a, I mean, there's a slight inconsistency in the future land use map. Uh, it, it doesn't, uh, the neighborhood, there's some changes, it's just, I don't, you know, most of them are single family, but there are.
They're already there.
There are about four or five duplexes as well that are hidden within there. I didn't call them out because I didn't, I am, somebody told me to keep it confidential just in case.
A lot of stuff, there weren't any sub rigs at all, and some of them were even built, so.
Yeah, and, and that, and that's, um, typically what happens in these, uh, older subdivisions.
Right. So you said there's going to end up being a duplex and a single family, so we're rezoning and then subdividing, or it's already subdivided into parcels?
Yeah, that, um, there, there is a subdivision application in for a, um, administrative approval. But what they're requesting is for the whole parcel, which is point 96. The subdivision part would be roughly around 20,000 square foot each.
You're just replacing or trying to leave duplex?
Yeah.
Thank you. But we're.
I see, well, I, I understand where you're going.
Right, you're rezoning both parcels now and then building one duplex, keeping one home.
The house could be taken.
But the house.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's what we had.
Is there a reason we're rezoning before the subdivision? Could you not have administratively subdivided it then?
They're, they're, they were requesting this. It, it was not, um, it was not me doing it. Yes.
Which means you can have two lots that can run the duplexes and votes.
And, um, I mean, I didn't put the, uh, the, but the chart up here, but, uh, for rezoning, uh, we look at what the changing or what the neighborhood conditions are.
What's the square footage of the lot where the duplex would be built?
Uh, a little bit over 20,000. They're both about equally, uh, split 20,000.
So devil's advocate, if we go R3 here, because these are 20,000 square foot lots, you can technically subdivide it again and get four 10s, those would still be in.
Uh, technically, yes. Uh, if, if there's.
That is how they do it.
You can bring it out and do.
Little baby steps.
And that's, yeah, and I think they're actually made up of those shotgun lots.
Yeah.
Um, that's why it's so large, they're just those individual lots.
So at the end of River View, that's commercial right there, so you have commercial on the end, and then you're going into single family.
Yeah.
With one or, one or two haphazard duplexes that are already there on River View.
Yeah, on River View, and I think, oh, I don't, I don't think that it's feasible to do, um, I, I wouldn't say more than three homes, because I don't know if you can meet the frontage requirements for it.
Yeah, and actually, I, I was wrong, I think you have to be 15,000 square foot. What's your?
Uh, for duplex, 15,000, 7,504, or a single family, and then.
You can get four, seven families.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, oh, because I, I did the density calculations on there, uh, you can see at the most of what can be, what can actually fit on the property was just the two.
There you go. Anything else? Motion?
This is board recommendation, city council.
I'll make a motion for a favorable recommendation.
I'll second that. It's an excuse here.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Councilmember Blinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
I'm having to recuse myself on this one. This is a family, uh, that is an applicant.
That's right, that's right. Um, Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
That is, uh, actually, we'll go to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. B, annexation of point 52 acre portion, 131 Harts Chapel Road, tax map 59, partial 39.04. Corwin Jane Landers, owners, Warren Landers, our attorney, Andrew Bobo, representing collectively and notarized owner petition, request a favorable recommendation of planning commission to city council for the annexation incorporation in the city boundary of approximately point 52 acres for the purpose of adjusting lot line in tax map 59, partial 101 and point 01 owned by Richard M. and Kristen Wilhelm. Rezoning request is made concurrently and with its annexation petition. The partial is identified in the future land use map as North Gateway Corridor Character Area. Uh, now, obviously, I am going to have to recuse myself on this.
I thought it was your partner, oh, your twin.
My mother, uh, owns this, and I'm only just going to write quick, cut and chase, I'll tell you exactly what's happening here. My, uh, Mr. Wilhelm approached me, uh, he has got, and Tom, if you can put up the map of this.
Sure.
Our par, partial, for some reason, has got a little wedge into his property. It's a really funky design, and all he wanted to do was square up his fence and his point 52 acre. She approached me, I asked my mother, she said, well, if it helped that boy, that's fine with me, and that's what it's all about. So personally, she said, since I am here, she said, I don't give a flip one way or another, but if it helps that boy, I'm, I'll do it, but if you don't, you're not going to make me my other, so there you go.
And, and if it pleases the commission, I can actually go over, uh, four of the items, B, C, D and E, since they're all related, and unless you want to hear me repeat myself. Um, uh, so, uh, if you recall, I, I think it was back in July, this item first came up, and during our research into the parcel, it turns out that the 10.36 acres that is in the, uh, in item, uh, D and E, uh, were actually not in the city. Uh, they had been placed into the city, I, I called it administratively, it was just.
They've been paying taxes on it for years.
Yeah, and, and what it looked like was that to the north of this property, um, uh, along this edge here, there was a annexation and a de-annexation. And it was associated with that one, and so the, the Wilhelm property was actually placed into that category. And when we were unable to find the documentation, um, it was better just to go ahead and through the process and clean up the records. Um, uh, and going back to the, uh, this is, this was actually, uh, we did, there was compounding error, we actually rezoned it to C2 when it was not our authority on it. Um, but it, I, this is last year's, uh, uh, analysis of it. You can see that it is part of, oh, that says mixed density residential, it's still wrong on there, uh, North Gateway Corridor Character Area, which, uh, um, which allows for the C2. Now, this, this parcel in this area, um, if you notice this strange configuration where you see that the, the Highway 231 North is annexed in, that was predominantly done in the past where they annex corridors to establish, uh, certain areas for industrial development. Um, this is what makes this one continuous and, um, with the city. However, there are no, oh, water and sewer services. That is B CUDS or Bedford County Utility District's, um, water right area, so they provide the water as well as fire protection. And then as far as the, um, the, the way, the, the sewerways, it is by septic system. And during last year's, uh, rezoning, it was required that a deed restriction be placed on the property that, um, and you see there for site A and site B, basically it just identifies areas that are to be used for, um, the septic tank system. Uh, and then maybe sometime in the future, there'll be, uh, we'll extend out there and B CUD and Chillicothe Power will get along and we'll be happy. Um, and, uh, we'll have more sewer right about there. So, uh, the request is basically, uh, not just to annex in the 10.36 acre, which now has been subdivided, oh, I don't have it on there. Oh. I didn't put it in there, sorry. Um, it, it is, um, the, the 10.36 acres is subdivided into two parcels, but it comprises, uh, the total is 10.36, and then with the point 52, they will all come in, um, annexed in if it is approved by city council, and then rezone at the same time to commercial two, which is consistent with the North Gateway Corridor. So what's being requested on all of them are, um, uh, recommendation, favorable recommendation to city council. Uh, and I separate them only for closing purposes.
So we vote on B first, and then we'll have to do.
Oh, it's up to you.
So we have to do individual votes for B, C, D, N, E, or can we vote on it as one?
Someone can make a motion to combine all of those together.
I'm going to make that motion. I'm going to make a motion that we combine B, C, D, N, E as one, and then I will.
One, just one vote.
One vote, okay.
Because they're standalone ordinances that will have to.
Will have to go with them. And then, do I get a second? So I'm going to make a recommendation to combine it as one vote, because it is one overall recommendation to the city council.
Second. But, um, but that is a favorable recommendation?
No, we're, we're, that's next, that's next. We're just making a recommendation to vote on it as one instead of doing four different votes.
Okay.
And we have a second.
Second.
We got a, a roll call, that's all the favor say.
Yeah.
I'm saying I.
I.
Well, let me, let me, just, uh, for discussion purposes, they've been paying city taxes on this all this time, and as we annex it into the city, now, we're annexing it without being able to provide our ser, all of our services, correct?
That's correct.
They, they have understood that.
Yes, they understand that.
Want to make sure of that. Okay. They understand it, and he expects nothing, he just.
And, um.
Remember that deed restriction?
And I think, uh, I can't remember, uh, Ron the Clanton would know better than I would. I think if there was an era before 2021, then you can ask for three years of refund. If it was 2022, I think it's two years. So, so there's some relief there as well.
I just wanted to make sure if we annexed it into the city, that we don't have to provide services at this time, and the, the owners of property understand that.
Yes, sir. It, yes, uh, it is written in the plan of services that way as well.
Right. All in favor, say if I say I.
Aha.
The post, that motion carries.
I could just clarify, much more, combine B, C, D and E.
That's correct.
As one, just making sure I got it all.
Okay, well, I'll read them, just because so everybody will understand what will be on the record. The next one, C, is rezoning a point 52 acre portion, 131 Harts Chapel Road, tax map 59, partial 39.04. Corwin Jane Landers, owner, Warren Landers, our attorney, Andrew Rambo, Andrew Rambo, uh, representing collectively and request a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to the city council for consideration of adoption of the rezoning of point 52 acres from county agricultural A1, commercial C2 general business to occur concurrently with the annexation petition. Partial is identified in the future land use map as the North Gateway Corridor Character Area. D, annexation of 231 North, tax map 59, I won't go through all that again, uh, Richard and, uh, Christian Wilhelm, owners of the two partials. Andrew Bobo, representing collectively and notarized owner of the petition, request a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to the city council for annexation and incorporation to city boundary of approximately 10.36 acres possessing two distinct partials. A rezoning request from county commercial to city commercial, uh, C2 general business was made concurrently with the annexa, this annexation petition for both partials. This annexation and rezoning is a correction made in the past with a partial to identify a city jurisdiction since on or around 2013. E, the rezoning of the 231 North, tax map 59, 101 and 101 point 01, uh, Christian and Richard Wilhelm, Andrew Bobo, representing collectively, request a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to the city council for consideration. For adaption and rezon two parcels totaling approximately ten point thirty-six acres. When the county commercial to city C two general business occurring, occurring concurrently with annexation petition. This annexation. And rezoning is a correction where the parcels were identified as city jurisdiction since on or around two thousand thirteen. And determined to be in the county jurisdiction. All right, there you go. I'm gonna play them up, I'm making a motion for a favorable recommendation to the city council on items B, C, D, and E.
I will second that.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Uh, Chairman Landers, how do you think about, you already confused yourselves, sorry. Um, Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Blevins?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, that will go to the city council, all four items for favorable recommendations.
And Mr. Wilhelm also made a comment, he said, you know, I'm kind of glad this happened. Because if I hadn't ever asked for that, I'd have gone on and paid taxes and I'd have never known.
Now it's official. Well, this is, uh, I think we've cleaned up most of the annexations. Every now and then, there's one that pops up like a cemetery.
You did a really good job cleaning our books.
Well, Ron, that can take most of the credits, me, I just, I just find the problems.
All right. Hell, annexation, state route four thirty-seven and Fairfield Pike, tax map sixty-nine, partial sixty-one point oh four. And sixty-one point oh five totaling twenty-three point thirty-three acres. Uh, Suzie Cartwright Johnson, owner, Joel Johnson and Saint John Engineering LLC representatives, Lee Adcock developer. Collectively requesting, uh, notarized owner petition. For the favorable recommendation of the planning commission to the city council for consideration of annexation. And incorporation into city boundary. Resoning request from the county agriculture A one to city commercial C two general business. Or partial sixty-four oh four, I, I mean, sir, I'm, excuse me, sixty-one point oh four. And county agriculture A one residential R four high density residential for partial sixty-one point oh five. Made currently, uh, with the annexation petition. In the future land use map, parcels are classified as the bypass corridor character area. And this was deferred, uh, uh, to the planning commission cycle by the app, so.
Okay. And, and I can speak on, on this one collectively as well, since they're all, um, uh, same property owner and same people are involved in it. Um, the bypass area here does permit, um, both the, uh, C two as well as the R four high density. And, uh. You see on the front here. Uh, this is part that they're requesting is, uh, the C two and then the rear portion, the southern portion as R four. Um, currently, they are, uh, agricultural land use, there are no services there. And within plan of services as well, this one requires extensive, um, development of the infrastructure part of it. Um, currently, it's unknown because all they're requesting for is the annexation and the rezon. Let's see here, uh, here's a better picture of it, you can see the two, um, different parcels here. It meets our current land use, um, plans, um, or, oh, I should say comprehensive plans. Uh, this, this is another picture, uh, it was subdivided in the county, which is permitted for, uh, any parcels over five point one acres. Um, currently, I, I think there, there might be, there might be an access on this one, but, um. Uh, if you recall, on the bypass, there is a, uh, a limitation to the number of access points on the bypass. And, uh, if there is one, it's, it's typically a farm road and requires improvement and coordination with T dot. Uh, the, as far as the development capacity for the R four, um, I use the highest one for multifamily, um. Uh, and that's a hundred and seventy-eight, the net density, the way I calculated, was just knocked off, uh, multiplied by a third. For any type of road and stormwater and those types of improvement, uh, to arrive at one thirty-six point nine three dwelling units.
And that's just calculating a worst case scenario, not necessarily what they want to do.
Yeah, this is just gross because at this time, uh, thi- this property is going to take a lot in order to be developed.
But they're looking for C two on the front half, so is that calculation for the hundred and seventy-two dwelling units? Or just the portion that they want to do R four?
Uh, yes, yes, twelve point twelve six acres, and, um, if I go back, see, maybe if I go forward. Um, sorry, I can't remember what I was thinking about. Uh, this one's probably going to be the best image of showing, um, if you recall from the last, uh, last, uh, or maybe it was, uh, last one's. Planning commission when we saw Richdale Lane one, uh, the intent was to develop Richdale Lane and, and to attempt to access. Uh, to the bypass, uh, through this, this particular parcel. Um, that didn't materialize because, um, the rezoning failed. Um, but they're still proceeding with this portion of it in preparation for, uh, potential, uh, creating another access. That will relieve some of the pressure off of Fairfield Pike.
Okay. Questions?
So it all meets, so it makes sense to be in our future language map, so what are you recommending that it's favorable recommendation?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it, it meets our plans, um, uh, the plan of services is written in such a way that. Oh, water is not provided, but that part of it has to be developed. Um, so, um, you know, tha- that part of it, just so that the, the.
Also for C two, because we need more commercial development, especially along that area.
And, and that is what, um, I discussed with the applicant beforehand too, um, uh, just what could, what could help them along. On this particular project, because, uh, it, it will provide another access for, um, connecting over, um, to.
Especially if they consider a service road that goes in there and not directly dumping out.
Yes, uh, let me see, where was that, yep, that's a better picture there, yeah.
How many acres is the commercial parcel?
Thirteen two.
Thirteen point zero seven.
So we had talked about like access roads and stuff like that, like down the road, how, how do you mandate the entry and exit points?
T, T.
When you start doing.
T dot.
Yeah, T dot, you can only have one access per parcel.
Right.
And, oh, everything else has to be pushed into internal access.
So if they don't have one, they have to coordinate with someone else for who will get one.
So they have one, so whatever's built there, they have to get approved to add additional.
They will not be allowed to add another ingress or egress on the bypass, they have to use one, that's it.
So they, so if they built an access road, who builds the access road?
Well, what you're talking about access road, just. Like a term road structure, yes, yes. I don't know what you're talking about, is if you start to do a road that goes on different parcels.
Well, yeah.
Up and down the bypass, that's a whole different.
Yeah. We take a lot of coordination with neighboring properties and owners.
Of the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, think about what's up wrong.
Or I'm in a dummy.
That you're allowed to do, if they're, if they're commercial properties to go off one lot on somebody else's.
I'll just say early on, not to, uh, pre-announce what I'm gonna do, but I want to make sure we vote on these separately. I feel like the R four, for the same reasons, the R three was inconsistent, it's the exact same measure, there's no way R four is inconsistent when R three wasn't. So, I want to make sure we vote separately so we can consider all three pieces.
Yes, and in this, um, survey, you can see the R two location there, if you're speaking.
I ran out of those, just for the annexation of the entire parcel, correct?
That's correct.
But the, the annexation is including the zoning.
No, it'll be separate.
Yes, the zoning is separate.
He was just talking about it collectively.
Yeah, got you.
Yes. This one needed to be separated out because of the.
Yeah, no, no.
I'll make a motion for a favorable recommendation on the annexation.
Say. Motion made, seconded, roll call.
I'm sorry, who seconded the few?
Me and Bobo did pick one up.
Okay, this is a, uh, favorable recommendation on the annexation. Um, if you're in agreement with that, when I call your name, say yes, Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Councilman Blevins?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
G, rezoning state route four thirty-seven in Fairfield Pike, tax map sixty-nine, partial thirteen, uh. Well, only thirteen point oh seven acres, uh, Suzie Cartwright Johnson, owner, Joel Johnson and Saint John Engineering LLC. Representatives, Lee Adcock developer collectively requesting a favorable recommendation from planning commission. To the city council for consideration of adaption, uh, to rezon thirteen point oh seven acres. From county agriculture A one to city commercial C two general business. In the future land use map, the parcel is classified as the bypass corridor character area. And this was conferred with planning commission cycle by the app.
The parcel is sixty-one point oh four. Sorry, I left that off of there.
Yeah. It was left partial, it, it was left off, but I looked it up and it's sixty-one oh four is the one we're discussing.
Yes.
Yeah, the commercial. It maps sixty-nine parcel.
Six, zero, six, one, point oh four.
I'll make, um, I just want to discuss it again, which one, I'll make a motion for a favorable recommendation.
Reason, motion made, seconded, roll call.
Okay, I need to ask a question, I'm looking on, on, uh, my iPad here, it breaks up. There's a line coming across, is that for the access for the residential? You see, I'm trying to read the footages on it and I cannot, uh, this is on the, uh. Thirteen point oh seven eight, uh, acres proposed for C two, but it's got a. Come here just a minute, Tom, well, you can see it up there on the map, you see where the line is?
Dotted line.
Yes, the, the, the dotted line is actually a subdivision line, uh, so it's subdivided.
I, I wanted to make sure of that.
So the north half is C two, the bottom half is R four.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it will be two parcels that will have, as our attorney has said, one access.
Yes, sir.
For the commercial and or the property behind it.
No, 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 I'm sorry, no, 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 what I was talking about is when. T dot put in the bypass, all property along the bypass is allowed one entry to the bypass. What is on the back, as far as R four, I'm not sure what that access for that property is.
So, Evan, determine what you think, just, you want to share this drop?
Oh, uh, I'm sure, no, I don't.
It's only waiting until we vote for the C two first and then we'll.
No, that's not the way I understand it.
Yeah, uh.
No.
In their concept plan from the, uh, Richdale Lane, there was a, um, there was a, it was drawn in that there was an internal access. Uh, going east west, so you had one access coming off of, uh, four thirty-seven north south. And then branching off east west.
But as you split parcels, you don't get to increase your access.
Tom, where.
Is it necessary?
Where will the, the access to twelve point two six acres?
It would be because.
They have to come in the same access, or do they have access to another road?
Yep, the commercial, depending on what's put there, the car, the car traffic will be nine to five, you know, commercial hours. And it'll be less traffic, the most traffic you're going to have to deal with is the residential traffic. And so one access onto four thirty-seven could be sufficient, but we won't know. Until you actually see what's going, are you going to have a restaurant there? Is it going to be businesses there, you, you won't know until you know what type of business is going to be there.
T dot is just handout access.
And T, right, and T dot will be the one that determines whether or not. One access will be enough to handle the whole development.
I should say, they've told us they're not handing them out, they could change their mind.
Yeah, and, and.
They told us they're not.
That's what this is.
We, we also, uh, and, and they're going to finish the bypass, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
And pud developments share an access all the time. So as a pud development where you have a mixture of commercial and residential. With one ingress and egress to a major highway, to the major road, that happens in other jurisdictions. All, but like I said, that access will depend on exactly what's being built both commercially and residentially.
But my question was, on the thirteen point zero seven acres, that is one parcel.
Yes.
That he said.
What we're voting on.
The dotted line doesn't separate it.
Yes, it is.
It's not divided, it's one parcel.
The thirteen point zero seven acre, yes.
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
All right, I have a motion on the floor, seconded, she's fixing it, roll call.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
I, I forgot, what is the most?
Recommendation.
Favourable recommendation to rezon to commercial.
Sorry.
That's okay, I forgot, I was going to ask you if we should have made a reminder. Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Councilmember Blevins?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
That will go to the city council with favorable recommendation.
Okay, H, rezoning state route four, four thirty-seven and Fairfield Pike, tax map sixty-nine, partial sixty-one point oh five. Twelve point twenty-six acres, uh, Suzie Cartwright Johnson, owner, Joel Johnson, Saint John Engineering LLC representatives. Lee Adcock developer collectively requesting a favorable recommendation of the planning commission. Uh, to the city council for consideration of adaption of the rezon twelve point twenty-six acres. From county agricultural A one to city commercial R four, uh, in the future use land map. The parcel is classified as the bypass corridor character area, and this was also preferred the planning commission cycle by the app.
And, and this one is the R four one that was changed at the beginning.
Yes.
I'll just make a second comment, I made just a second ago, we literally voted the adjacent parcel last month, both at the city council and the planning commission. It was inconsistent with R three, I mean, we'd be inconsistent with ourselves if we allowed R four. Uh, just as a recommendation to the developer who, you know, I don't like to leave people no options, I think in a good idea to look at. I'm assuming these are connected, the same developer, same people involved. Possibly come back with a pud where we're locked into single family homes with a certain lot size. Um, I'm just going to tell you, and I, and I'm just one sixth of the council, but we're probably not wanting to throw a bunch of apartment complexes on our bypass. We just approved one, I mean, we don't want a bypass with apartments that rise to some parcel off, but it's right at the edge of the city. Apartments are going to be a hard sell up there, um, single family residential would be welcomed, I think.
I was going to ask the same, why they didn't just come at us with a pud for both laws versus subdividing it into commercial, residential. It would have been saving a step and more favorable to approach us as a pud.
Sure, a, a pud just requires a lot more work and, um, and, and investment, uh, just something that was unknown. That, that's probably why, I'm, I'm probably thinking out their, their thoughts out now.
Right.
Um, but that, that's what I'm presuming, so.
I'm making a motion.
Yes.
I guess the, the thing that we see different, I guess, with this property than the other property is the fact that this is in. The bypass corridor and the bypass corridor clearly lays out, you know, the allowance and, and proposal of R four, R three As. You know, for what I think is being proposed here, and we don't have a concept at this point, you know, for this property, but for what has been talked about. You know, I think that my client would also be very happy to go with an R three A. If the, if the planning commission and the council would be more favorable towards that. And, you know, I think something along the, the lines of some townhomes and the R three A would limit you to four unit. Four unit townhomes. A would limit you to four-unit, four-unit townhomes, you know, would be very doable for something like this, you know.
I, I get that, that, uh, the, the future land use map has been both a blessing and a curse to us. Uh, we regularly don't conform to it, and it's not that it's, I mean, it's a guide. We, we look at it and we're trying to stay in that, but it's not gospel, it's not the Bible, and, and sometimes we vary, just, and just from the facts on the ground that this, again, we're on the bypass, we're trying to keep traffic moving through, we put high-density housing right up there, we're immediately gonna move our traffic counts way up. Uh, I believe even on the concept, eventually, if this works right, this ties into Richdale, which ties into Fairfield Pike, so we're really hurting traffic right across the street from a brand-new elementary school, Cartwright Elementary.
Well, I would argue that this will help that situation and your, and your staff, you know, your staff, Public Works is very favorable to this.
I'm for the connection.
Helping that situation.
Yeah, I'm for the connection with single-family, I just feel like the, the multifamily were just...
Josh, and that's why I feel like a pud might be more favorable because you would be able to come at us with, so this area is actually designed for mixed density, mixed use, mixed, like, favorable to a pud, because that's what mixed density really is, is you want to see the mixture of single-family, multifamily, commercial, how it, how it ingress, it'll start with, you know, and we would be able to see, okay, well, maybe in this area it's townhomes and higher density, but then as you move towards the actual single-family residential back towards Richdale and the school and all that, you can show in a pud that you have the mixed density that is conducive to what the zoning is supposed to be. So you have commercial against the main highway, you have a little bit of high, a little bit of high density as you come in, and then you buffer that to the existing residential with single-family residential. So it's a step up, and that's what puds are intended to do. Puds are not intended to come in and just be a slam in and of all, of all townhomes. That's not the original intent of what puds are supposed to be. A pud is originally supposed to be a mixed-use, mixed-density development where you have a mixture of commercial, high-density residential, and single-family residential, and it gradually steps back to have that change, that natural feel of a growth of the neighborhood. And that's why a pud is favorable, in my opinion.
All right. Not asking for a photo there.
Let's get back. I'll make a motion right here that, uh, provide a unfavorable recommendation to city council.
I'll say that.
Our motion's on, favorable recommendation to council for R-four, roll call.
Commissioner... Can I, can I ask for clarification before you all vote on this? With an unfavorable, what does it come in as a, you favor the annexation, it comes in as what if you do not present?
R-one.
Just making sure that's on the record.
It will come into R-one, the default, as you call it.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Moore? I guess is sending an unfavorable recommendation to the city council.
Yeah.
Councilmember Blevins?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Okay, that will go to the city council with the unfavorable recommendation.
Okay, it's, uh, seven twenty-five. Anybody who wants to rest their break, get a drink of water, stretch your legs, I'm gonna give a five-minute, I don't know if anybody wants to go do that. Since I've learned that as these meetings get longer. Things get smarter.
You were so loud about that.
Everybody racing for the goal.
I'm racing for the line, racing for the...
Playground. All right. Back in session. Site plan, ten forty-nine Madison, tax map eighty-nine D, group A parcels four, four oh one, and four oh two. JCG Holdings LLC owner, ETL Incorporated, representing collectively requesting approval of eight point nine five acre gravel lay down yard and maintenance storage on three parcels related case file number SP twenty twenty-five eleven zero zero four and zero zero five. This parcel is totaling four point fifty-four acres, is split zone I two general industrial and C two general business. The three parcels are split, classification to future land use map. End. Future land mass access off of Madison Street is classified as Madison Street corridor character area in the parcels four, four point oh one, four point oh two, classified as mixed density residential character area. All right, Phil.
All right, well, this can be combined as well. Um, I'll speak to all three of them, it's the same property owner, same development, um, uh, I through K. But if you recall, uh, last year, um, this came in for a rezoning attempt that was withdrawn. Uh, but you can see the split zoning on our map there, it's not a defined boundary, it's a more like eyeball guess of what, where that, uh, split is. Um, but a portion of, um, I think it was parcel four is, it's actually, uh, C two, uh, commercial, and then the remaining are I two, general industrial. The I two allows for permits by right, um, a lay down yard, industrial lay down yard. Uh, the C two does not, and that's where the maintenance buildings are and. See, uh, you can see from the image here, the two buildings off to the, uh, or closer to Madison, Madison Street on the east side with the rusty roof. Um, that I think used to be called a fencing. Um, eh, uh, yeah, uh, so, so the total of all three parcels is eight point eight one acres. Um, since the rezoning, there was a little bit of controversy around it. Uh, the applicant withdrew and decided to develop, um, as it, as it said, uh, which is the I two and the C two. Um, let's see, uh, uh, let's see, the, as far as with the consistency, it is not consistent with the future land use map. Um, this is where we might want to consider revising the map for this location. Uh, this area has always been historically industrial for years and it remains so. Um, you can see the, uh, from this aerial photograph. Uh, to the, boy, this is a non-conforming trailer park, but you've got industrial all the way around there. Uh, you've got some commercial that surrounds it on the side and, uh, Madison Street. And so what the applicant is proposing, and let me go to, oh, here we are, um, is an industrial lay down yard for the entire property. Uh, oh, actually, with the exception of the, uh, commercially zoned area, that's going to just be the storage portion of it. Um, uh, one of the, one of the comments, and this is probably just going to be, nobody's going to really be interested in this part of it, but, um, in our code, it says that gravel is, uh, basically gravel is not a dustless material and dustless material is not permitted, but the way that it's written, that's all it states about it, but the reason why it's related to stormwater. So stormwater offered a number of suggestions to help. Um, it's in our code, um, to use landscape buffers surrounding it, which is what the applicant has done. Um, they also use a dust control spray, um, I think it's twice a year or so, um, uh, just to control that spray, because what happens with the dust is that when sheet flow water across there, it gets into the streams and the water and creates a cloudiness and kills off our, our wildlife in the water. Um, so, uh, there, there are a number of things that are, need to be addressed, including a traffic study, um, and knowing the position of the planning commission on traffic study, that's why I had the recommendation here, just to, uh, address those items, um, that this be deferred until that time that is approved. Other than that, there were some minor comments within there, most of the planning comments were addressed, there were some minor, uh, uh, minor, minor things on my part. It's more, there's a, there's a couple of items from John Freeman, but, uh, the biggest one was the, uh, the missing traffic study there.
Um, I think our situation was last year or year before last when we addressed this. We had no problem, and all of this is listed at ten forty-nine Madison Street, but ten forty-nine Madison Street is just a little section of this, most of it's on railroad avenue.
Yes, sir.
Now, our question, the last time it came before us, if I remember correctly, was that we did not want to do anything to change that commercial corridor on Madison Street.
That's correct.
We did not want any, any industrial traffic coming out onto Madison Street.
That's correct. That, that was, uh, during the discussion on the rezoning, that's what I remember as well, is that, uh, there was concern about, um, traffic coming out on there, uh, but since the property is, um, already zoned that way, uh, they can use it, there's probably going to be, need to be some type of improvements, and I think you can see it in, uh, one of their plans. I'll have a close up of it, but you can see some improvements to that Madison Street. I don't know if trucks are, i- if it's, uh, it probably is wide enough for a truck, but I don't know how the geometry, I think it, they, they've got two additional access on the rear, which is where I think most of the truck traffic is, and Josh Bowe was here and he can talk about movements on the property.
And Josh, we, I think we discussed this last time about trying to keep that, that commercial corridor on Madison Street and not, and I think at that time y'all had mentioned something about maybe just having, um, personal vehicles to go in to that and.
That's still what we're tracking, we're thinking like, so most of the time it's going to be, it's more ideal for our trucks to go back on the railroad avenue side.
So what has changed since that time when we, when we had it before? Anything?
Nothing, other than the fact that we just wanted to use that I two space and not the C two space, so.
It looks like you added the landscape buffer though.
That's true.
That wasn't there, which I like that, because I'm going to say, I, I like the fact that you're now considering the landscape buffer to buffer the visual from Madison to the industrial.
Yes, and then that was, that, that was one of the requirements, was that when you have, um, disparate uses, that you have to have some type of, uh, and then also, it's the same thing with, uh, uh, the gravel.
What's the width of that access drive? That's just the access drive, right?
Twenty, was it twenty-two?
Twenty-four feet?
Yeah, I think it's twenty-four, so it's, it's about the width of a road. It just needs to be improved, um, you know, it's, it's a little bit rough shape.
So you're requesting a deferral on this?
Uh, yeah, because we're discussing the traffic study.
Thirty day? Um, or until, well, that's until traffic study, so traffic study, yeah. Have you, have you heard anything back?
We have not, we've initiated, but hadn't heard back, so.
Yeah.
So that's, that's fine. So what, do you want to put, um, you want to put a limit on, or ninety day, or, or how, how do we need to do this?
Till next, thirty day till next month?
Well, I mean, it's, that, I would assume they're not going to be able to get a traffic study in thirty days, probably won't, yeah. Yeah, I would say ninety would give them plenty of room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if they want to come back sooner, would that be an option?
Oh, yeah, we'll turn, we'll get it. Well, I'll make a motion to defer, uh, this item. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you want to combine them?
Out of I, J, and K in one motion?
I will make.
And the reason why they're separate is because they're all individual parcels.
Okay, I see. So I'm going to make a motion to defer items A, or I, J, and K, uh, for ninety days, ninety day deferral.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Second, roll call.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. L, site plan, four thirty-seven bypass, tax map sixty-nine, partial thirty-one point oh one. Uh, DCC Strategic Realty Partners LLC owner, St. John Engineering, representing collectively requesting approval of ninety-six hundred square foot thirty, uh, high construction office. This parcel is four point sixty-eight acres on C two general commercial. The future land map partial is classified as bypass corridor character area.
Okay, um, so if you recall, uh, earlier this year, there was a subdivision, or actually, there was a rezoning for this portion of the parcel to commercial, and then across the, oh, bypass to the north is Pleasant England, uh, which is the R four. Um, let's see, oh, sorry, I'm pushing. Uh, so there's a request for ninety-six hundred square foot, um, office building. Uh, I'll go straight to the design. Um, this requires, uh, obtaining permission from T dot for the access onto the bypass from that area, uh, but you can see where the building is, and then the remaining part is gravel as well for equipment storage, uh, things of that nature. And then, uh, all along the, the perimeter, uh, the applicant is preserving a lot of the, uh, landscaping and, uh, doing buffering, in, in the actual drawings, he shows which, which types of is layering the different types of, uh, landscapes, so you don't have just all canopy trees, there are some, uh, understory as well as shrubbery, that's going to help, uh, screen between the residential uses that are around this property at the moment. Um, oh, yeah, I did put in there. Uh, so that's the proposed buffering. Uh, it meets all the requirements for landscaping, parking, exterior lighting. Um, this is the elevation, um, and, um, in our design standards, and, and, and that's where some, uh, that's where I'll defer to the commission, but, uh, you can see, it's a, it's a really nice building, attractive building, they've used different types of materials on there. Uh, one of the comments that are within the, uh, uh, our design standards is about the use of corrugated metal, uh, they've used it as a design accent here, and, um, uh, one of the things about the design standards is that it's, it's intended to be middle of the road, uh, so allows for greater, uh, creativity, and, uh, even though the corrugated metal, the intent behind it was so that you wouldn't have, uh, basically barn-like structures, which is not the design. Um, so this is what they're proposing, um, for there. Uh, there were some conditions, um, on this, uh, let me go back, uh, and I know St. John and I differ on our, uh, understanding of this, or, uh, maybe we just disagree, um, but one of the items that, uh, I, and I failed to put it in the folder, but this subdivision, when it was done, it was done by, um, basically dividing five point, over five acres. Well, obviously, this one's not over five acres, and when Northcut did it, it was recorded. Um, and, but just because a subdivision is done in, uh, you know, administratively or through the tax assessor's office, doesn't mean that it is a, uh, an automatic approval for us. And one of the issues that we have with this particular item, and, and it can run concurrently with the construction, is that, uh, you're going to need both the access as well as, um, uh, infrastructure improvement for it. So there's going to be work that's being performed in the public right of way as well as with extensions, and we would like to see a plan for that. Um, that is coming from both myself and as well as, um, John Freeman. Um, but otherwise, I think it's a great project.
Okay.
I, I have no idea. I don't know if they did or not.
What's that?
Have you made granted access?
Uh, Greg?
Yeah, don't worry, there, there's an existing.
Yeah, so it's just the.
Oh, I thought. Yeah, nothing.
It sounded like it was, it said it was, because you can, you know, a subdivision by state law, if it's over the five acres, they don't have to come through us.
Yes.
So, and that sounds like that's what happened here, was that after the bypass was put in place?
Cause it. No. Wha- what happened was is that that, it, what should have happened was that the bypass, when it split this parcel, it should have, they should have had two different deeds for it, and there was only a single deed, and one of the things that, if you read the regulations too.
So the parcel on one side has not been divided then?
Uh, not proper, well, actually, it's been recorded this way, so.
On one side, I'm not talking about a parcel that got split by the bypass.
Yeah.
Did one side, what was left, has it been subdivided since that bypass came in?
Uh, it.
That's what it made, that's what it sounded like, what you said.
Yes, so, so what happened was that, because this is when, uh, how it started was, I got a phone call from Drew Reed about what the regulations were for subdividing, uh, or, or dividing up attractive land over five acres, and the regulation states that all the parcels have to be over five acres. This one was, it, he basically shouldn't have recorded it, is, is what it amounted to.
So did he, on one side of the bypass, split a parcel that was over ten acres, he's got to be over ten acres to get it split, five five, is that what happened?
It was not over ten acres, or actually, I guess, I guess it was eight acres was on the one side and there's four point some acres.
But you're talking about the bypass splitting it.
Uh, no, no, there was a plat that was recorded, uh, in basically presuming that you could do, since it was over five acres that you could, or it was over ten acres that you could split it, but the way that the regulation reads.
Show me the two, or the two.
Uh, sure, so the two, two properties are, right here, this is the eight point four acres.
Yeah.
That was Pleasant England, and this was the four point.
That again is the bypass is splitting it.
The bypass.
I'm not talking about the bypass splitting it.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but when this first came in for the rezoning, this was all one deed, all one parcel.
Separately, I remember getting that.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, and how we handled it was that we split zoned it.
That's it.
Um, right.
Which was, is permitted by our.
I'm just trying to make certain what you're saying is one side of it, one side of bypass.
Yes.
Has not been, been administratively split since then.
No.
Oh.
I think what is, I think the clarification here is it used to be one whole unit, the bypass split it.
Right.
But it still remained one unit, and then we went and allowed the subdivision because the bypass split it, and we only were left with four point six five and eight, correct?
No, it wasn't, no, no, it, it was actually.
That's how I was reading it.
It, it was actually subdivided by going to the tax assessor's office and recording a plat, which shouldn't have been done that way, it should have been gone through our process of subdividing since it was within the city. It's, it's an easy fix, it's, it is an easy fix.
But needless to say, the only reason the split needed to happen was because the bypass came in there and whacked it and let literally half.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of other parcels that are like that too.
But it, in essence, it was flat recorded because there's no sense in having one plot, one plot of land.
Well, Greg wanted to follow that section.
That's cut between the bypass, the, the bypass cutting, and so it didn't make sense to have one owner on the south side and one owner on the north side.
It, it should have just had a deed for one side and deed for the other side. Uh, Susie Johnson had the similar situation, um, with Global Manor, with John Stefanski, and John Stefanski did a deed description for the portion that he wanted.
But the four point eight, the four point six eight acres in and of itself was four point eight, due to the horizontal cutting of the bypass, it hasn't, I think what Ginger's asking is the four point six eight didn't come about because on the south side of the road, it was a larger parcel and then it got subdivided to four point six eight, on the south side.
On the south side, no.
That was what I was clarifying, because Commissioner McGee's been asking me a lot of questions about access to T dot, and that's what I was referring to.
One parcel.
Right, but my unders, but my understanding is on either side, you got, you have on both sides, so they should be fine.
Yeah.
I just, the way it sounded, it sounded like one side of the road had been bifurcated, and I was like, that's when you get a question of, do you have another T dot access?
I thought he had meant saying that it had been applied for, that's why I was asking, so.
Tennessee Hall will not let you, uh, split. Not have anybody, so you can't have, you're not going to cut them off and not have access.
Yeah, you have to have either access eastbound or you have to have.
In other words, the four point six eight can't then get divided into two and two because, or they would have to share one access to each two and two, and I think that's what we're trying to clarify. We're trying to clarify that you're not subdividing it to a point where it's going to leave a piece of land with no access.
No, this is the, the whole site is being developed as the construction office and,
Jennifer, did that help you?
If I remember correctly, this piece of property, uh, we talked about it being because of the storage of large vehicles, that it would be industrial instead of commercial, wasn't, did this come up a year or two ago?
During, during the rezoning, it was discussed, uh, well, I think it was just, uh, the use of the term, because I think that, uh, uh, when it was first discussed, it was brought up as warehouse, but I don't think that was the intention, uh, behind it, because, uh, and, and actually, I should say, even though it says on here, it probably, um, what this is, is, is Greg's office.
Okay.
Uh, he just happens to have, uh, what is tantamount to a commercial lay down or outdoor storage.
That's a beautiful building. What will be around the outside of it will be, will it be equipment that'll be stored outside, visible to the people on the bypass?
Around the side and main to the back. The front will be paved and parking.
There has been a big buffer left there, he preserved a lot of the trees I've driven by there, and it's been preserved, a lot of that, so I think.
We talked about the buffer, I think, the last time it came about, yeah.
Yes, and, and that right of way on, um, uh, the bypass is pretty large. So, so the building is set back and the access is.
So it'll meet the requirements of commercial?
Yes.
With these larger vehicles there and all, and kind of things like that?
Yes, sir, um, this, the outdoor storage is just an accessory use to the principal, which is the office, the, the construction, or the, um, contractor office.
Okay. I'll enter that in motion.
Motion approved with the three conditions, uh, the three conditions.
Okay, second. Motion made, seconded, and low call.
Um, Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, re-subdivision in combination White Street, Lander Street, tax map eighty-nine J, group N, parcels twenty-three and twenty-five. HB Realty owner and St. John Engineering LLC representing requesting approval of re-subdivision in combination of previous administratively approved minor subdivision application for two parcels currently zoned R three medium density residential, totaling point seven oh acres. In accordance with the municipal, municipal subdivision regulations, Article Section Two, and on and on, anyway, planning permission approval, future land mass use, land use map, the parcel is classified as mixed density residential character area.
Uh, I got the representative wrong on here, sorry about that, St., it's got St. John's office. Um, so this, uh, this was, um, subdivided, um, earlier this year, and so, I think it was earlier this year, it might have been later last year. Um, because of that, our subdivision regulations require that within, um, last ten years, if something's been subdivided, has to come before the commission, but it's, it's a pretty straightforward lot. Um, this is R three zoning, um, it looks like it's just being prepared for a duplex, um, in that location.
Okay. Add a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made, seconded, and roll call.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
All right, this is concept, major subdivision, Dale Point, one thirty-five McDale Lane, tax map sixty-nine, partial five point oh eight. Gary Boyce Construction LLC owner, St. John Engineering LLC representing collectively requesting non-binding competent and concept review of one hundred and fifty single family residential lots subdivision, multiple phases, on fifty-six point four acres, parcel currently zoned R three, medium density. And rezonance in, is, is in a correction where the parcels were identified as. Like I turned it over and got one more.
Yep, that was it.
Yeah, I'm wrong. Where parcels are identified, city jurisdictions since on and around two thousand thirteen determined by county jurisdiction. I did flip it over wrong.
I think it, it just ends at the future land use map as mixed density residential.
Yes.
Okay, um, so as you recall, this one, um, uh, this is one of the few cases in state of Tennessee, or at least middle Tennessee, um, where the vested rights had last. Um, so, um, uh, the applicant is coming back, and there was only a portion of it that was still, um, extended to December, uh, but with this subdivision concept, which is required to be come in, uh, for, before a preliminary plat, um, it, it's going to basically oversee any previous approvals or, um, any remaining vesting. Um, uh, so fifty-six point four acres are utilizing the whole site this time for, uh, uh, single family dwelling, uh, on a R three lot. Uh, staff is working with them, uh, because one of the comments was about, uh, providing connection to, I guess I could use my pointer. Uh, there, uh, to the west there, and, um, that, that's not the, you know, the final configuration, there's still, uh, discussions, uh, there's internal workings on that, um, what that access might look, or what that connection might look like, and then they will, um, they, we will get with, uh, Gary Boyce and his crew, uh, whenever that is, uh, whenever we can, you know, fully discuss everybody's part in it. And, um, basically, uh, most of the comments that were from planning were during preliminary plat stage, these are the critical engineering comments that, uh, uh, were provided. Um, none of these are, need to be addressed at this time, it's just during the preliminary plat, these will all have to be considered.
So this is, this is where we were discussing phase one, that was going to have entrances to single family dwellings. Are, are we changing that?
Uh, it, this is a brand new subdivision at this point, oh, yes, this is the one that had the.
So how many of these, how many of these, um, lots are going, going to be accessible to McDale Lane? I mean, that's the reason that we didn't want to build phase one.
Yes, there's, there's none, no.
That's what I thought.
There, there's.
Interior access.
These are all interior access, so you have one access here.
Okay.
And then you have, these lots are fronting on the interior street, uh, you have over on this side, phase five, because it's our middle feature.
Yeah, because I knew that we had, okay, phase two and phase three, I thought we'd approved before or something like that, was that correct?
This is just a concept stage, we're just, there, there's no vote tonight.
No, this is, um, just to give you.
So they've lost their vested rights to the previous plat, and this is a new plat being presented to us.
That's correct.
For pre-review.
That's correct.
And how much difference did it, is it from the original that had vested rights? I think that's what we're asking, right?
That's right.
It, it was substantial, because I think the previous version didn't incorporate a lot of the environmental features in this. It, it was substantial because I think the previous version didn't incorporate a lot of the environmental features in this one.
Your old one had all the driveways coming out.
Yeah.
This is not.
Yeah.
This has got an interior road, all that's different.
And it has two entries, it's not all coming out into one entry onto Mcdale, they've got two different entries onto Mcdale.
That's correct, and part of it's because of the environmental feature.
Yeah, but it's all, there's a lot of homes, it needs more than one entry in and out. Um, again, my concern is still narrow roads and not, and being able to get flash trucks and fire trucks and, I mean, ambulances and all that, in and out with very narrow curbs.
Yeah, the, these, the, these ones are, um, the roads are designed for public roads, so it meets our standards.
Yeah, I know, yes. Tight cut a lot of our roads.
Well, hopefully.
Not the width of the road, it's more the curvature of showing around the corners, like we don't have a good standard for our land development rights, don't have good rules for our curves as we're going around. And I see that again in here, so you have what looks to be like a five degree or ten degree curve instead of like a twenty, I mean, just in general. But they, they're tight curves to try to get in and around the neighborhood.
Yes, that's basically.
Tom, just a, a vague question, uh, you'll know what I'm talking about though. Has there been a conversation with Mr. Boyce about the discussions on Mcdale Lane as far as changes to that road?
Right, right now, um, what's happening is that, uh, Will, it's in Will and Buck's department that they're, I think they're, they're, they're generating costs for what they're looking at for on the western side, uh, to be able to discuss with that property owner.
Somebody asked me that, we have not had.
That would, that would obviously affect this, this design.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then just one comment, which it was addressed in the other thing, but the, last I saw this, and I think still there's no measurement, but those, all those southern lots, you had commented in there, I think about it, on the next slide, about a twenty-five foot buffer of some kind?
Yes, that was, um, these were the engineering comment, uh, and one of them was, uh, uh, having that buffer from the street.
Which I agree with, I just, looking at the concept without measurements, it's closed lots, don't look deep enough, I think they may have to shift that road or something, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure where that road is on, on the drawing, I think that was just a little bit, um, uh, not known, and I think that's why Will put that in there.
Yeah, cause we definitely, we don't want a bunch of houses with their back porch, like, you know, ten feet off Mcdale or something, so we need to. Yeah.
Okay.
It didn't matter. So I think we missed that.
Okay. If that's, any other comments on that, we'll move on to the next.
Yes.
Okay. All right, concept, HUD amendment, Cedar Glade, Cedar Glade Circle, tax map sixty-nine, parcels fifty-five and fifty-five point oh six, fifty-five point oh seven, fifty-five point oh eight. Alcorn Properties LLC, Old South Properties, Hollins Heads Land LLC owners and Saint John Engineering LLC represented collectively requesting non-binding comments, concept review of a HUD amendment. Total land area in four parcels is thirty-nine point eighty-three acres on planned unit development. Future land use map, the parcel is classified with the North Main Street corridor character area.
Okay, um, so David Alcorn came to us, um, and, uh, asking for, uh, a HUD amendment for this. Um, uh, trying to make sure that they, uh, keep it as a minor amendment so that it doesn't have to rise up to the level of city council. And, um, this, what, what's being proposed is supported by staff because of the change of the road configuration through here in the preparation for maybe one day for dream art connection over to Fairfield Pike. Um, so what David's done, and this is the area though, oh, I guess I, I didn't realize I had a blow up view, uh, but you can see Fairfield Pike to the east. And the, the thought is, is that this northern connection here, uh, let's see, is that the right one? No, actually, it's this one. Um, would actually fully extend if one day we're able to get connection over this. Uh, it's pretty hard. Uh, so this is, um, what the amendment involves, um, and this is where, uh, the discussion with staff was, it's the removal of all these townhomes that are fronting on, um, uh, these roads here. So these all were approved years ago, they have direct access onto that road. So the thought is, is to make that more of, um, for mobility to, um, and the request is to change, instead of residential, this is a mixed, I should say, I, I should add that this is a mixed residential, commercial HUD, uh, to change this into commercial. So adding more commercial, this is not the, um, uh, the exact road configuration yet, it's not, uh, a- and actually this part is. So you see this happening here, and the reason why, uh, Mr. Alcorn brought that, brought this in, is because he's got Victory Park to the north here. And, um, so the idea is, is that you would have these connections here and it's a little bit better road configuration. So it, it shrinks out a lot of the geometry of the road. Um, and then also it removes the access, direct access onto, um, that road in preparation for maybe being a throughway to Fairfield Pike.
Now, on the left though, where is it connecting out onto, to, to Main Street, two thirty-one?
This is two thirty-one.
Yeah, but what is that, is that, wha- what is right there, what are the businesses there on two thirty-one, so that I can.
Well, th- these are.
Is that where the Lowe's is and all that and?
Oh, no, no.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
North, north of the Lowe's.
Okay, got it.
Here you go, you can see Walmart.
Thank you. Okay, so, so right now Walmart, with Walmart, they're already developing some neighborhood there, north of Walmart. And so this is connecting into what they're already grading and probing and building, right?
Yes, there's already townhome developments.
Got it.
A portion of that.
Right there.
On there, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, so the, actually these aren't buildings.
I knew it, you made it out there somewhere, I was just trying to visualize it, so that helps, and then, uh, so then that goes, it dumps out onto Main Street and then it'll hopefully eventually make it all the way out to.
Yes, and there are some, uh, discussions about, uh, what's happening on this parcel as well.
Cause it's definitely needs to relieve some of that traffic off Fairfield Pike.
Yes.
Be able to have a quicker access out, which I feel like we did a failure to the city by not remanding in Cartwright Elementary to do that in lieu of making it a private road. And then having a direct connection out to the race track there. We should have made that, they should have flipped that lot and made that go straight through. But hindsight's twenty twenty, and after going through all that, I feel like that is a positive direction.
Yes, and, and so the, what, what distinguishes between a minor and a major amendment typically is, is if you're adding more housing units, it triggers that requirement, uh, this is a reduction, um, and then other items are, uh, whether or not the impact is going to be greater if you have commercial versus residential. But in this case, um, because of the changing road conditions, you're actually improving the flow on site.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing too is the green space, if you decrease green space, it triggers a major requirement, but it's, uh, in this case, there's actually increases in number of, of green and open space. Uh, so there's no change in bulk standards of any of the building, which would also trigger, um, a whole new, uh, project. Um, but in this case, all the, all the items that they're proposing falls within the standards of the minor. Uh, and, and what'll happen as a next step is a preliminary plat and then a, a change in the concept plan, kinda what we saw earlier, the change, which would, I think it was six.
So this is still again, just a concept preliminary review, you're not making any.
Nope, uh, it, it just wanted to test the water and see what the, um, uh, you know, how the commission felt about it, so. And I think he's been speaking with the mayor.
I think that's a positive direction, full hearted, just not just. The add addition of commercial, we don't have any of commercial already to support all these residenials that are coming in. So I feel like the connect clear, making it smoother, the connection, and I think that is, I like it.
Okay, anything else?
Everybody?
All right, preliminary plat, major subdivision, Eagle Boulevard Road Widening, fronting on fourteen twenty Railroad Avenue, tax map seventy-eight, partial forty-nine, industrial development board of the city of Shelbyville owner, Josh Bobo for Cooper Steel Fabricators LLC represented collectively requesting planning commission preliminary plat approval for infrastructure improvements totaling one point eighty-two acres. Advocate also requests a favorable recommendation to city council to abandon that portion of Eagle Boulevard public right of way, zoning of fourteen twenty Railroad Avenue, parcel is zone I two general industrial. The future land use map, this area is classified as innovation character area.
So all the work in this one is, um, this project is in the public right of way, and the intent is to, uh, improve these, this intersection, and then, uh, Cooper Steel, um, is requesting the abandonment of this, this road here. Um, and so, um, they're, they're asking for a favorable recommendation and staff fully supports it, they've been working with them on this. Um, right now, it's at, uh, it, it's at the, essentially a preliminary plat stage and it's, it's running towards construction phase. But you can see what's happening here, um, it, it greatly cleans up that intersection, doesn't solve all of the world's problems, but, um, uh, but it definitely improves it. And Josh, I have to apologize because they only told me recent, uh, this week that, uh, they would like to see the construction part of it with the infrastructure before the abandonment part. But, uh, so, so the abandonment will go to city council. Um, uh, following the recommendation here, but that might be a little bit pushed ahead until, um, the infrastructure along railroad here is done. And I don't, I don't know where you are on that, but, um, uh, but I can, I can let you know a little bit more on it, so. Um, so, so the request is just, uh, is for a favorable recommendation, uh, to support the abandonment, um, and then, uh, this, this road widening project, it'll go to city council at some point in the future.
Is there a standalone resolution to council on abandoning?
It's currently, uh, the reason why I can't go directly right now is because there, there's still infrastructure within, um, this right of way. And, uh, mostly with John Freeman, no, no, uh, but, uh, he is one of the major drivers that he, he would like to see his, his infrastructure, so.
Let her sign a motion.
But I'll make a motion to, uh, for, I guess we gotta need to do the recommendation together with this, so.
I would separate this into two motions, frankly. One, you're doing the preliminary plat, and then two, the recommendation on abandoning a road. Cause that will go, that does go to council.
Okay, we'll do the, uh, annexation, well, the, the plat, from a plat first, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll, make a motion to approve the, preliminary plat, second.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Gladys?
Yes.
All right, now we'll do abandoning the road, let her sign a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the city council.
I forgot, I'm like, I didn't call enough names, I'm so sorry. I'm looking down here and I'm like, who did I miss? It was, it was David, Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm gonna, I don't know what happened, your name got left off of that section for some reason.
Okay. Now we'll do the, or.
I'm gonna make a favorable recommendation to send to the city council to abandon the road.
Second. Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gladys?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, preliminary plat, major subdivision, Victory Park, located at tax map sixty-nine, portion of partial fifty-six oh one to fifty-six oh eight. Victory Baptist Church owner, Saint John Engineering, uh, LLC representing David Alcorn developer collectively requesting preliminary plat approval for high-density residential subdivision consisting approximately one hundred and fifty townhome units in Tennessee horizontal property regime, uh, H P R, oh, twelve point eight two acres. Parcels on R four, high-density residential, the future land use map, this area is classified as a North Main Street corridor character area. This was deferred also to this cycle.
And, uh, the applicant's requesting, um, uh, deferral until January because it's the holidays, uh, and he wasn't able to make today. Um, and partly he wanted to see what's, um, what the, um, what the feelings were for the HUD amendment, uh, which definitely impacts this particular problem.
Okay.
Uh, so, so until January, planning commission meeting is requesting.
All right. Let's close this part, we'll go in.
Motion to defer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To January.
To January. Motion to defer to January. Motion made and seconded, roll call.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Gladys?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
I'll go administrative before you guys.
All right, this is, uh, I wonder who did this project?
Yeah.
Uh, and so we have a number of administrative approvals, um, uh, and I just have to look at your recent, uh, uh, but this is, this is just one of them that pending, uh, Gateway Church of God, Don did a great job on the design of it. Um, uh, so this is one of the, uh, it was under five thousand square feet and, and not all of it was, um, actually current, or I, I, some of it was, or a lot more of it was in the future. Um, so that's one project.
You wanna, I wanna just point out with the changes, because of the fire line, we, when you look at the elevation though, on the right and left of the main entry, we moved those back. So they're, they're still bunked out, but not as far, and so that way we clear the fire line. So I just want, so that's the only change on the elevation, so you know, they don't come past that far.
Okay. All right, uh, hey, oh. Oh, well, that's right, that's right, I forgot. Uh, Victory Park had also a, uh, lot combination, uh, for their, um, property that is, uh, because it's two lots, administrative approval as well, um, you can see they're, they're just preparing for their, uh, uh, their development application that we'll see in January. And then we had a number of construction projects, uh, this is construction stone wall run phase five, actually I should say we only have one. And then Bo?
Yeah, and I talked with Ginger before this about, you know, impact, these are not, uh, feasible anymore, um, but, um, and I know this, this meeting went long, so maybe we can discuss, um.
Can I, uh, ma- maybe we can, uh, do this as part of, cause there's a joint, um, council and planning commission meeting coming up in early next year.
I think that would be, cause of the.
You know, that could be one of the, that could be one of the items to do that.
Okay, yeah, but I, I think that that's something that I hear a lot, um, and, and I think that, you know, with our infrastructure lacking the way it is, our existing, and then what we've got coming that, that we, um, you know, we need to explore any and all options, uh, available to us to be able to get that funding somehow. So there's, there's several different ways, uh, and there's several ways that it may not work or, or don't, but I think the discussion needs to be brought up to, uh, to the council somehow, some way, even if it's a commission or if it's a, a, a little, a, a committee to, to find ways to, to study it, um, just something that needs to be brought back up, I think it will be, it'll be discussed. So yeah, I, I, I concur with, with what you say, that, to, we can discuss it at our, uh, meeting. Did you say that's in January?
Uh, I, I think last.
You should do it in February.
February, so we'll do it at, at our, um, meeting with the council.
And then the last item, um, at our growth meeting in November. And then the last item, at our growth meeting in November, we're starting on the overlays, and the first overlay is the bypass overlay, so I included it in the package, and you can read through some of the first parts of it, because that one was more related to corridor, but it also includes signage in there, I spoke with you about that. And then after that, we'll identify the, I know we need an airport overlay, but we're going to start building our libraries overlays.
Okay, also, we have our training, don't forget.
Yes.
That was Sam Edwards, I hope anyone can attend to that, he's very good, and very important, he is good.
I'm loving understanding.
He's very good, and also, this has nothing to do with city, this really thing, this is just a personal, this is just a personal thing, I've had people ask me, I do own popcorn stand on the square, somebody wants to know, when's it going to be open? So the holiday schedule, it will be open for the Christmas tree lighting, all funding for that goes to the fire department for the toys. It will be open for the parade, and I think that one's going to go to Boys and Girls Club, and then the wine party will also be open for that, and that funding goes to the imagination library.
That's good, that's very good, I'd be excited to see that back running good.
Well, it's been going, and it's been going on the car shows on the.
I haven't seen it, basically, that's when.
We opened it for the veterans, now we gave popcorn away on the veterans parade, they gave it away on Halloween, too.
Thank you for that, I mean, that's something, but it'll, it'll cost you on these, because we're making money. Matt Duck wants all he can get. It costs, but, you know, without, you know, it could have easily, it could easily be gone, it could easily be gone.
There is no price on it, now, if you come up and don't give a dime, you can have a bag of popcorn. No notions on it.
Okay, okay.
So whatever do you want to donate for that bag of popcorn, that's what it'll be. Sometimes people give a dollar, I have gotten twenty dollars. Whatever. That's where the money's going.
I'm just glad to see it there, I think I can speak for a lot of, glad to see that that's up and going, it's a staple of our city.
You go big a lot.
Oh, yeah. We've actually, on some of these things, believe it or not, they have wrapped all the way around Kelly Wilson's office, and went all the way, almost to Capri. And one night, I walked around in good college, and last year, we actually ran out popcorn, so we hopefully won't do that. Anyway, for that, we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you, Bo, appreciate you serving us.